All right, well, hello, everybody. Matt O'Connell will not be joining us tonight. He just had a brand-new grandson born.
Only one, only one this time, not two?
Yeah, he's just did the one at a time. It's 2020 for you right there. Just lost all efficiency, but yeah, so he's in Montana with his brand-new grandson. All right, so for real call, we have everybody but Matt. We have an agenda for the work session. Any action?
I'd move to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
A second.
It moved by Chris, second by Myra to approve the meeting agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So I expect this to be a little bit on the brief side. Let me, I should have been a little bit more prepared. So for upcoming agenda items, one coming up in this next in, in the business meeting, we have the OSBA director nominations. I would I don't know if we can have just a brief discussion without decision about what I, what I'd rather not have happen is one person is nominated. We have this robust discussion. It's shouted down and then we end up nominating somebody else and we get real confused. But I'd like to kind of have an idea of is, is, does the board have a general consensus toward a particular candidate? And if so, we can kind of enter the business meeting, prepare to get through that agenda item a little bit more quickly. So I'd float, Amanda, I know that you had raised the prospect of nominating Katrina before. And so I imagine that that is where you're inclined. I don't think you were swayed very far. I don't know either of the candidates. So
An opportunity at the virtual convention when we had the regional roundtable that both of the candidates came and spoke, not specifically giving candidate speeches, but just spoke and had an opportunity to continue to share their, their views. And I would be inclined to support Katrina. And is it Katrina? Is that, it's, it's not is it Katrina?
Yes.
Okay. And so I would be inclined to support Katrina as a candidate. And then Sonia is running unopposed, so we do need to take action on just supporting that nomination and, and vote on that one.
Yeah, I support Sonia because I've worked with her. And I
Can't hear you, Myra.
You still can't hear me?
Your real face.
Oh, I say I support, I support Sonia because I have worked with her. And Katrina, I like, I haven't worked with her. I like that she has a mental health background.
Well, I'm, I'm swayed by Amanda's endorsement and I have worked not as much as probably others in the room have, but with Sonia, and I've been very impressed by her leadership and her representation on OSBA of our area. And so I'd have no reason to be opposed to that. Okay, then I think that's pretty clean. Oh, okay. Okay, thanks, Rob. So I think that's pretty clean. Amanda, I'm gonna defer to you for that motion. When we're in, when we're in the meeting, the language is there and it'll be do we need two separate motions for that, Sarah?
Okay, a separate motion for each, because each position is a separate position. So it'll be a separate one for, I think it's position seventeen and the other one too.
Okay, so Amanda, if you wouldn't mind, so that I'm not putting you on the spot there, just you make the motion for position seventeen, we'll get right into discussion and and the vote and then do the same for nineteen, if you wouldn't mind. Okay.
And then remember, we also have the resolutions, the legislative priority and resolutions to vote on as well. So that's a separate, it's in that same OSBA activity, but it is a separate motion.
Okay. Then as far as upcoming meeting requests here in the middle of the month, I believe we are on for the health education subject, which yeah, that should be at our mid-month work session. And and then what I still got on here for upcoming agenda items undefined as to, they're not attached to an agenda just yet. We have reviewing board goals for the OSBA training. That's part of Board Professional Development. I see that likely is coming in February at a any kind of strategic planning retreat. A ruler update that's from Matt was the original request. That's not on an agenda yet. We'll get it there. We have instructional calendars talking about including other religious holiday observances, being more inclusive of other cultures. That will be discussed as part of our strategic planning meeting in February. We have an ELL report update that's waiting on comparative neighboring district data being released by ODE. Data on disciplinary action discrepancies is on a future agenda. We don't have it attached to a date yet. We have year-round schooling and starting school later.
To clarify that request that I made, it was particularly racial disparities and not just an overview within disciplinary actions, but also in academic achievements and other areas. So I, I looked over the, the request list and I didn't notice that there was quite a few things that I had mentioned in previous meetings that weren't up there. And I just wanted to know like, what, what is the, would it be all right if I should just post them up there? Or does it need to be formally introduced again at like this meeting, for example, to so the board is informed to put them on there and to see like if the board wants them on there. So what, what should be the process?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think I think technically it's two members. That's what we do when we move in second an agenda is two board members are agreeing on that item. I think the forward warning is is probably practically the best way forward. And then we can add them to the list. I I will, yeah, so we should get them added, Robin. My my caution to the board in general, or just to help me and and I'm not going to throw Myra under the bus, but as we try to set these agendas, just know like we, we've talked certain agenda items that we've spent four months or, you know, two months talking about like four meetings with thirty-minute discussions in every meeting kind of stuff. Just know, I mean, I think you can see those topics on the you know, kind of there are certain ones that aren't like that, you know, certain updates, for instance. But there are certain ones that do demand that level of engagement from the board, or we end up there. The more we stack on there, it's, it's, there's a scheduling practicality to it as well. So help me prioritize, I guess, is my you know, what's, what's key. Anyway.
On the, on the disciplinary information, does that get compiled at regular times? It's not something that's done every month because you'll see ups and downs until you see what's gone on either to three months, six month or, or yearly. So I'm not quite sure when the, the normal progression will be for that, so that we're not asking for something out of cycle and get data that's not necessarily as complete as it could be.
Well, that's from the work session at Cal is where that first came up. And we had discussed that I'd talk with Catrice about when the proper time to put that on the, on the calendar is. Initially, it was, well, we want to wait until there's data, like current data. The reality is we've had our kids in digital instruction for almost a full calendar year at this point. So, or at least we're approaching that. So our disciplinary data is either going to look really different. Or or, you know, maybe it's a historic view. If it's a historic view, because the board has seen this, those are items where I don't know, it might be worth just an individual conversation with the superintendent initially. And if you can draw out of that conversation, what particularly you want to bring to the whole of the board, that'd probably be the easier way.
I'm fine not having it like, we don't even have to schedule it. I just want the, the information and yeah. Yeah, if I can meet with Catrice and that's, that's historic information as well, because like this, you know, this has been a typical year. So we could even take that off as not even to burden us with more time to go over. And then I'm sure it would be scheduled when accurate information is out, as you guys have already received that information. And then however, that conversation is progressing based on those numbers, you know, maybe that will be another request or, but I just think it's good information for you know, all of us to have, to be operating off the same numbers. I don't know if we need to report, so I'm fine taking that off.
Well, and in the operating agreements that we'll look at today are hopefully or possibly take action on. Once superintendent shares that information, then she's gonna share it with the whole board. It's just, we're not going to engage in the conversation over, over digital. So I appreciate that, Robin. And I appreciate the clarification too. You, you're looking at historic information, which I'm sorry, I missed that. And at September's meeting, so.
And I'm happy to oblige Chair Peterson. I think if we could do some things like that, I would love to have the opportunity to give full context and the information with a small group or single board members on things like that. But we do usually bring those at, at minimum to your strategic planning sessions, if you recall, if you have the data for that timeframe. Try to. This spring was nominally because of, didn't really have any data logged with discipline. So there are no state assessments except for the ones that temp presented last week and back in August.
Yeah. So Robin, with the other request, and I'd say this to any, any board members, if you wouldn't mind for just then we can move through this part of it, if you wouldn't mind emailing Sarah with what topics you're looking for and CCing Myra and me, then we'll have visibility. We'll, Sarah, I'm adding on to your massive list of stuff, but then, then Sarah could add it to the, to the share file and then we will all have visibility of it.
All right. I, I mean, I also have access, so I can also add it if, if that's easier. Or, or I can do it. That's fine. And one thing, or I'll let you go through your list and then Amanda and I had something, oh, is that right?
Let's hear it.
Okay. So at the policy meeting today, and this was something that was on my list that I had mentioned, you know, a few times about like talking about mental health care services. And there had been interest in discussing this as a board. What does that mean? And so that was something that Amanda and I spoke about today and needs to be prioritized a bit more quickly as to because there could be budgetary impacts. Looking at discussing a policy to see like, what is the requirement to having mental health care specialists in our schools, at the high school level, at the middle school level to look at, you know, especially for student safety and overall mental health and wellbeing. And so as there, for that request, there would be a budgetary impact and we're going to go over our budget calendar at our business meeting. I just thought you guys should know that that was also a request that would be on there that would have to be scheduled.
That's really helpful. Thank you for that heads up. So came out of policy committee. So are we going to see a policy about? That? Okay.
Right now, no, it's the discussion because there is a budgetary impact. So we wanted to have a discussion with the board before we pursued anything.
Okay. Understand. Let's talk about that briefly, then. What so what information would you be looking for in the near term, like a current mental health care specialists who, what, what our current staff composition is, I'm, I would guess?
You're asking what the request will be?
Well, trying to scope out what information is coming. So because there could be budgetary impacts, I immediately jumped to staff since that's the bulk of our so the information that would benefit that board level discussion could be what our current staffing level is for mental health care specialists.
Yeah. And it would be looking at the creation of new positions if this was something that the board wanted to pursue.
Yeah. Okay, so hearing that specific information that current staffing level what alternative models might look like or what regional comparators might look like, but this is me projecting. So this is, this is the conversation. I'm not saying this what and then assumingly, we're going to need to know of any level of proposal, what that kind of a cost would look like, right? Okay. Out of that, those proposals typically come out of the operational leadership of the district leadership team, including the proposal for what mental health needs our students might need. So let me talk with Myra and Catrice. I, I really appreciate you bringing it here so that we can, we can look at a way forward for that discussion. And I can be in touch, Amanda and Robin, about what your expectations are with that. Thanks.
I had to step away for a second. Did we talk about the land acknowledgement item that's on there that we've done a couple of times now? And I wondered what was our expectation going forward? Would it replace previous types of beginnings of our meetings? Would we do it at every business meeting? What, what does this look like now going forward? We did it at our February retreat and then we did it at our last meeting. I believe. And so what is it, what does it look like now as we move forward with that statement?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I anticipate that this would be just a phased discussion from the board with action that would affect our next years operations, but that I admit to being my vision of the timeline. That, yep, I don't know. Myra, Amanda, you had floated this as an agenda item.
I wanted to acknowledge that it, you know, since it's Indigenous, Indigenous Peoples History Month, it would have been a good month to do it. And I'd love to see kids write our district's land acknowledgement. Knowing that next year, we're going to implement ethnic studies in, in our curriculum. And we are focusing on students, you know, all students belong policy. I think it's a good opportunity for students to take an active role and have
I'm, I'm sorry, Myra, I can't, I can't hear you. Even turning my speaker all the way up, I can't hear you.
Can everyone else hear me okay?
I, I can hear you. I, I can, Myra.
Because I can hear everybody else. It's just not you. But it's not you.
So just knowing that I just, I think this is a good opportunity for students to take an active role in what they want that to look like. The actual process, like all the details? I don't know. But I'd like to incorporate student voice in this process.
I really like that. And I think this is a good time as well if we are supporting our native communities and making this a priority to get our mascot.
Sorry, you broke out. Were you talking about Gordon Russell?
She just said mascot, but that was on my mind as well.
I think she froze.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Is that an item that we want to add to this is the discussion about the wooden statue that's at Gordon Russell?
I want two different conversations. I think one's a land acknowledgement and a separate, separate discussion.
One is separate. But the other item I think that needs to go on so that we don't lose sight of it is the wooden statue that's at Gordon Russell and its removal.
Yeah. And I do think they're tied, right? Like you don't do land acknowledgements and talk about the importance of native indigenous populations and then do, you know, cause harm.
Absolutely. I, I think they're related in this context. I think by board action, there's nothing united about them. Like the conversation is very much joined. I just from a functional board taking action, I don't know. I would imagine that if the if the mascot of a school is insensitive or inflammatory or anything on that spectrum, we have to have a policy that somehow deals with it, right? I, I just, I think that conversation might be better with a small group with district leadership, just to know, just somebody to get a little bit of background and then bring it forward.
Right. So we do have a policy on it that does talk about mascots. And I think this one has just been in place for decades that it's become a new awareness of what it is and having the conversation soon about that particular item that is at Gordon Russell Middle School that is not what it has been presented as. It's not a totem pole by any way, shape or form. It's a wooden statue that Mr. Russell carved in his backyard.
Yeah, I have no issues with that conversation. I'm, I'm questioning whether that needs to rise to the level of board engagement. Or is that I, have we exhausted the operational conversation to the point where this now is a board conversation? That's what my question is. Like, if, if that concern is there, has it been voiced to the superintendent? Has it been unremediated? And now we will have the conversation as a board.
We, we can work on it in a policy committee because like you said, it is a policy issue on what mascots we have and it would have to, you know, we would have to align ourselves with why we are doing it and make it consistent across this.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think I would just I trust any of you who are bringing this forward to have that conversation with the superintendent first and then we'll see. I mean, yeah.
I think, I think where the, the concern is, and, and I have talked with the superintendent about it, is that it is something that has been at the school for a long time. And if we come in procedurally and stomp policy on it without having that conversation with the students who feel like that's part of their school environment without really understanding how it shouldn't have been, how it hasn't been a respectful school environment. And so that's where as a board, we can come in and say, yeah, it has to go tomorrow. But the fallout from that might be a little intense. So I'd like to make sure as we move through this, and I don't know if there are other places in our buildings that have things like that. I was just very surprised that when they did the remodel, they made a special place to put it. So it means something to the students and staff that go there, regardless of what the policy says. And so that's why it kind of floats between the two sides of the board wanting to be mindful of how we take action, but also at the same time, once you know, you can't unknow.
I see. I honestly didn't realize the prominence it had. I and as a graduate of Gordon Russell or a, I I imagine other people have different perspectives. I never ever had an attachment to any of the decor at the school. Except for the orange lockers that they just got rid of.
That you wanted out of your house.
Yeah, it's a fair conversation. I'm glad we're having it too.
Yeah, I agree with Chris and I think that, that, that is also a part where students could be could play an active role as they learn the history of their buildings, as they learn history of mascots where it will, if, if we're giving them the tools and we're educating the kids the way we should be, it's going to come from them. They're going to be the ones saying like, hey, this, you know, doesn't have a meaning or yes, our mascot needs to change. I really think the kids will start bringing those issues up as they become more aware and as they become more informed.
Yeah, Catrice.
Chair Peterson, I have been in conversation with Director Howard regarding those things, as well as my office have been in communication with the principal of the school to see how we could move forward with those things. But I think, again, I think first things first is, is policy and then we make those corrections while we are strategic planning on how we engage kids because we're also having to engage them about some other things that are happening at their schools and changes in the trees and things like that that are out that are all being diseased right now. So.
Yeah, policy committee, if you have a chance to just review that commit, that policy in particular soon. I I guess what I want, what I, what I'm wanting, what I want to do is the right thing for our students. And what I don't want to do is the right thing for our students in a politically inflammatory way. Because I think both are right for our students. And to me, the way that that happens is through operational leadership. I, I respect that it would someday come from our students and I'd hope that day would come soon, that if it's insensitive to a population of people that they know about in a way that other generations have not, that that it would someday come from them. But if the right thing to do for them is to lead them now by removing it, then we should remove it and not wait for that moment to happen. So policy committee, if yeah, if you can visit that policy. And then I'm, I'm sure there would be some level of engagement to know how to do it properly. Yeah, I think both the land acknowledgement and that conversation are, are near conversations. I'm not suggesting that they're not tied to each other. I just think the board actions are different.
And I'm just wondering, like in terms of like the land acknowledgement, do we have any idea how the board would like to implement those land acknowledgements or are we going to collaborate on that? Because I would like to do land acknowledgements before like sporting events or maybe our board meetings?
I think we should elaborate on, I think, I think we should have that conversation phased appropriately for action to be taken, but also for us to have had the conversation. I, I don't think if we bring it all at one meeting, that that's going to come to a healthy resolution. You know, I, I don't think or it could, it, I just don't have that confidence, to be honest. And so I will, I'll talk with Myra about the best way to move forward. And Myra, I'll probably just completely lean on your leadership of how to, how to phase that conversation properly. To move forward and Myra will probably just completely lean on your leadership of how to, how to phase that conversation properly. Um, so that we can, we can come to a consensus view.
Chris uh also pointed out that we have like a, was it a pledge of allegiance or some kind of like something written into policy because we discussed this a little bit? And so maybe that would be informational on when we use it or how we use it, if it's a lie.
Chris, you're on mute.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I get the new shirt now. Um, yeah, so the pledge of allegiance is not in policy anywhere except for students. And it says by state law, students have to be given the opportunity, I believe it's once a week. To participate in the pledge of allegiance. Those that don't want to participate have to be respectful and be quiet and, and um, and not. Interfere. Um, the board started doing the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of all of its business meetings back around the time of nine eleven. And we did it shortly after that event and then continued to do it. So it's never been in board. Policy, it's never been in board operations. It's been a tradition that got started. And um, at one time I had a conversation with the board about how did we feel about continuing it or not continuing it because we only did it at the one. Meeting each month and didn't really come up with a clear. Um, one way or the other, so we made some modifications to it, but it's not in policy that the board has to do the pledge of allegiance.
Well, if there's a policy that students need one opportunity a week for um. A pledge of allegiance, it might be like easy add-on to say and land acknowledgement and do both. At the same time.
And I think they tend to do it, Catrice, maybe you would know, um. And again, this is all pre-COVID, but they would do it at their um assemblies that they would have. That was usually an opportunity for them to do it and so that um. Was often when, when they could do it without singling anybody out, it was just something that the kids had the opportunity to do at that time, especially the K five arena.
I, I totally agree with you, Robin. On, on. Yeah. Okay. So out of that land acknowledgement, we're gonna need to figure out um. How it's constructed. This is, this is me. Checking it against the board so that I make sure I'm not missing stuff. So one question is how do we construct it? Or which, um, how do we, yeah, how? Which version do we um use or how do we construct it ourselves or engage that process? Two is um. How do we deploy it? Those are the two key ones that I'm hearing. Am I missing anything besides that?
So. But I just wanted to add that we do have resources. Naya is a great resource and I have spoken, no directors there who are more than happy to help us. They do have. Um, I think only one student that they represent in our district that would be happy to help us lead some of this work. Um, and so we do have, I think, a lot of support already from uh our communities.
Yeah, Blake, you know some of the people in Naya too, you work with them, so. You can hook us.
Some of their kids pretty well, yeah.
You know some of the kids are pretty well, and I think we have kids who are under Title VII that would be, that could be active participants in that.
Okay. Okay, so if you have board agenda topics, email them to Sarah, CC. Myra and me, just so we can have visibility of it. Board, I'd encourage you to consistently check that, that's um. It's not been recently updated as far as dates, but I owe that to you and that's the most transparent way that I can show you that I'm doing my best to listen, right? My best might not be good, but it is my best, promise you that. Um, and then uh. We've got um. Policy committee, you have a little bit of a, of a task to review that mascot policy or anything, any derivative policy that might be affecting it. And uh, I will have a conversation with Myra and Catrice regarding mental health care specialists and our way forward for that agenda item.
I did go ahead and add that one to the um board request while I had it fresh and put down which policy it was and which OAR references as well, so we can.
All right. All right, um, and Amanda, you'll be on the spot for our motions in the big, in the business meeting, so. Uh, we have some public comments. Hopefully the boards have a chance to review those. Sarah solicited back from those commenters who might be willing to make verbal comments. Sarah, have you received any other responses to that question?
So Alexa was the only one that said she would actually like to speak. Um, Holly Regelman said that she could, but she didn't think she needed to. Um, and then I did receive a couple responses saying they, that what they submitted was really what they would say and they, they wouldn't be able to be there tonight. Um, so as long as their comments were included in the meeting, um, but Alexa was really the only one that said, yes, she would like to speak during the meeting.
Having read the le- letters, Alex is a recent graduate. Holly is a parent. And we had about three submissions, three or four submissions from students themselves. And you didn't receive any responses from those students or do you know off the top?
Uh, I did not. One of them couldn't be here tonight. Um.
Okay.
But otherwise I, I only got five, four or five responses after I reached out seeing if anyone wanted to specifically speak during the meeting.
Okay, I may do a, a kind of a cursory review of our attendees to see if any of the students pop up. Because then that would give us a student voice, a recent alumni voice and a parent voice as representative samples of public comments and the rest are in the, in the public record. Board, do you have any concerns with that approach?
I think people reached out to and they were asked if they want to speak. I think that was really great and I'd like.
Okay, that's how we'll move forward on that. Uh, appreciate you, everybody and uh look forward to seeing you in the next room. So we're adjourned.